This meeting to order. If the clerk would read item number one on the agenda.
Item number one, under final consideration. An ordinance amending Chapter 186 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady regarding park fees.
This was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, under original consideration. A resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 584 to Madalone Associates, Inc. for two second-floor window projections with downward lighting on the building located at 200 State Street, Schenectady, New York.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding a moratorium on convenience stores.
Okay, also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, number one, with Barton and La Judas.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution appointing Dave Duwan, Neary, Chet Ram, and Hector Ramirez to the Affirmative Action Advisory Board.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution amending the 2014-2015 Consolidated Plan.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 1631 Eastern Parkway, SBL 50-21-3-17.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution setting fees for the use of the Steyman's Park Pavilion.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice under the Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program.
Discussed in public safety without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the New York State Attorney General's Office under the Bulletproof Fest Invest Partnership Grant Program.
Also discussed in public safety without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution to amend Resolution 2014-153 regarding the sale of 219 Brandywine Avenue.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution declaring September to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Schenectady.
This will be taken out of order. Mr. Mutavaren will present that. And item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution honoring Electric City Bike Rescue.
Ms. Porterfield will present that. That will also be taken out of order. And then we have several additions based on our Claims Committee meeting tonight. So, item number 14.
Item number 14, under original consideration. A resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 18 Jefferson Street, SBL number 39.56-2-21.
Discussed in committee tonight without objection on consent. Item number 15, we are holding. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 805 Lincoln Avenue, SLB number 49.40-6-34.
Discussed in claims tonight without objection on consent. Item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 1055-1057 Strong Street, SBL number 49.50-1-24 and 49.50-1-23.
Again, discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 1062 Bridge Street, SBL number 49.48-2-9.
Again, discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 19.
Item number 19, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 1734 Albany Street, SBL number 49.84-1-3.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. And item number 20.
Item number 20, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title to 2602 Camp Bell Avenue, SBL number 48.50-1-31.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus. They'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. I will now call the City Council meeting to order for September 8th, 2014, and ask you to rise for the invocation by Reverend Theodore Rupus with St. George's Greek Orthodox Church.
Glory to you, O God, O hope, O Lord, glory to you, heavenly keen comfort of the Spirit of truth, who is ever and present, filling all things, treasure of blessings, and giver of life, come and abide in us, and cleanse us, and save our souls, O gracious One. I mean, holy God, holy mighty, holy model, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy model, have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy model, have mercy on us. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, always, now, and forever, unto the age of ages, amen. All holy Trinity, have mercy on us. Lord, forgive our sins. Master, pardon our transgressions. Holy One, visit in here all infirmities for the glory of thy name. Lord, have mercy, Lord, have mercy, Lord, have mercy. Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, always, now, and forever, unto the age of ages, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one. Through the prayers of our holy Fathers, O Lord Jesus Christ, our God, have mercy upon us and save us, amen. Let us pray to the Lord, Lord, have mercy. O Lord, preserve those whom you have placed in civil authority over your people. In their peace may we also live peaceful lives, untroubled by the evils of this world. Grant them wisdom and love for the people. Renew your Holy Spirit in them, that they may learn your truth. Watch over your creation, our country, and the church which you have established in it, keeping us from all which would harm us. Help us by your grace, that in all purity we may ever glorify you, the uncircumcised God in three persons, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, always, now, and forever, unto the age of ages, amen. Through the prayers of our holy Fathers, O Lord Jesus Christ, our God, have mercy upon us and save us, amen.
I'll ask Deb Merwitz with MVP Health to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice alone.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo is excused. Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Kozier?
Here.
Mr. Riggi is excused. Mr. Mutavaren?
President.
Ms. King?
President. All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first one is declaring September to be Hispanic Heritage Month. Mr. Mutavaren?
Madam President.
You have the floor.
A resolution declaring September the 15th to October the 15th Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Schenectady. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important time to recognize and celebrate the contribution of the Hispanic and Latino-American to the cultural, economic, political, and social landscape of the United States of America. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States actually originated as a Hispanic Heritage Week and included a date of September the 15th and 16th. These days were chosen to coincide with the anniversary of the independence of five Latin American countries: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, on September the 15th, and the independence of Mexico on September the 16th. And whereas the original proclamation called upon the people of the United States, especially the educational community, to observe such a week with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And ever since then, the organization, individual, and institution at all levels of American society celebrate the occasion with educational and cultural events. And whereas in President Obama's 2013 proclamation address, he says, "Whatever our ancestors crossed the Atlantic in 1790 or the Rio Grande in 1970, Americans are bound by the set of common values, a love of liberty and justice, the belief that a better life should await everyone willing to work for it." As we celebrate the unique influence of Hispanic culture during the National Hispanic Heritage Month, let us also rededicate ourselves to realize our shared aspiration. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the mayor of the City of Schenectady pause in their deliberations declaring September the 15th to October the 15th, 2014, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Schenectady and celebrate and contribution the Hispanic and Latino-American have made to our great country. Thank you.
Okay, you move that, and Ms. Porterfield seconds it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
I just wanted to say that in the name of the first Hispanic church of Schenectady, the Church of God, we've been in the community for over 30 years. We want to recognize this resolution. And we also want to invite you, October the 12th, there's going to be an activity at our church from 12 to 3:00 in honor of this particular date. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, on behalf of the Hispanic Coalition New York, thank you for recognizing the efforts of the Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second out-of-order resolution is honoring the Electric City Bike Rescue. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. I'd like to invite the folks from Electric City Bike Rescue that are here tonight to come. Behind the rail, please.
Madam President. You have the floor.
A resolution honoring the Electric City Bike Rescue. I just want to take a couple minutes to say a few things. First of all, certainly my pleasure to be able to be the one presenting this resolution to you, knowing that the hard work that you do and the work that you've done in our community. And I just want to say that the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association has been working very closely with the Electric City Bike Rescue for the wonderful work they do in trying to get them some additional space in the community. So, we're working really hard on that, and we really are just pleased with the work that you've been doing throughout the city, not just us. But we do kind of claim you as our own, just so you know that. Whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue is a volunteer-based organization which rescues, repairs, and redistributes underused and unwanted bicycles in the greater Schenectady area. And whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue was founded by David Davis and Peter Lyon with assistance from Transition Schenectady, and the Electric City Bike Rescue has become an important resource to the city. And whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue holds free bike repair clinics in neighborhoods throughout Schenectady in order to help people repair their bikes, as well as teach them the skills needed to perform bike repairs and maintenance on their own. And whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue has brought people together from all areas of the community, whether they are a youth looking for a fun way to exercise, a person looking for a source of alternative transportation, or just someone who sought to learn a new skill. And whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue has generally been donating space to work out of the Edison Tech Center at 136 North Broadway in Schenectady. And whereas, the Electric City Bike Rescue is actively seeking new volunteers and donations of bikes, parts, tools, et cetera, to help maintain and set up shop. And whereas, if you would like to donate your bicycle or bicycles, you can deliver them to the Edison Tech Center at 136 North Broadway in Schenectady on Thursdays between 5:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the mayor of the City of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to recognize and commend the Electric City Bike Rescue and their contribution to the betterment of our community. Madam President?
Okay, you've moved that. Seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porterfield and the other council members here tonight. It's really a great honor to be recognized for the work that we're providing in the community. We've only been at it since January, and there's just been overwhelming public support for us so far, which has really been great. But we're just three volunteers up here tonight. We have a tremendous group of volunteers that show up every week and to our other events outside of the tech center, and I just want to thank them as well while we're here. And for people who don't know, the Electric City Bike Rescue is an educational-based community bike shop. We rely solely on, you know, the support of the community for the bicycles and tools and parts that we provide to the public. So, you know, like I said, it's just a great honor, and thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Well, thank you for the work you do. And while we're on the subject of bikes, we do have a presentation. I'd like to invite Deb Merwitz with MVP Health and Harmish Das, who is the City of Schenectady Health Fair winner. We had a big health fair here on Saturday. And this young man emerged the winner. So, we have a presentation for him. Yep.
Thank you for letting us be here tonight. We're so happy to present our raffle winner from our third annual community health fair. Oh. It's my first time. So, my name is Deb Merwitz. I work for MVP Healthcare in the Health Promotion Department, and I sit on the Wellness and Safety Committee with the City of Schenectady. We meet monthly. So, we worked really hard to plan this community health fair on Saturday. And what we did was, instead of just allowing folks to walk up and enter a raffle and walk away, we worked really hard to create engagement. So, we created a passport to wellness. So, Harmish had to visit six booths to get some information and awareness on health and wellness and get a stamp from each one. And once he did that, he was able to enter the raffle to win the bike that was so generously donated by Electric City Bikes. We appreciate that so much. Is there anything that you want to say, Harmish?
Thank you all for coming here.
You're welcome. So, we're going to...I think Marion's going to present the bike to you. It's all yours. With a helmet, of course. You're so welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for all the work you do.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. And we only have a draft form of the minutes, so we will not look to approve those tonight. We'll move on to communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, September 8th, 2014. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated September 8th, 2014. Under general, an invitation from the Gold Star Mothers and Schenectady County Council of Veterans Organizations to the City Council regarding an event on September 28th at Evergreen Memorial Park Cemetery. Under petitions, there are none.
And I'll just also make one announcement, that next Monday night in our committee meetings, the Police Department will be presenting a report to the council about where we are with the dog situation, the improvements that have already been made, and those that will be made in the future. We will meet up here at 5:30 for just that presentation, and then we'll move back downstairs for the regular council committee meetings. Okay, any committee reports? Nope? Okay. We'll move to privileges of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Protown, we're headed again to where the open public meeting law was violated again tonight. We've got eight more agenda items that were added tonight that were done through executive session through claims that was done downstairs. You're supposed to have three-day notice to give to the public of items of not only being on the agenda, but also letting people know what's going on. You're putting these things on the agenda tonight without anybody knowing what's going on. Have no clue. The second piece is, is tonight you've got the Community Development Block Grant. You approved it for $200,000. That's your over $200,000 you're reallocating for homes to be demolished, but you're not even telling us where those homes. Now that $200,000, you're allocating $23,000 for administrative cost. I mean, you know, we're already... You don't even have the back of the house, which is the Community Development Block Grant, public hearings on development. What goals? What staff has done? You've got SNAP program, and you've got codes enforcement. You're floating the back $600,000 to $800,000 every year for the last four years. Again, you're moving money around without even telling anybody what's going on or without any plan or any goals. I mean, it's just doling money out without any accountability. And this is again, I mean, this is now the third time you've broken open public meeting law. And, I mean, you know, we've got to be able to know exactly where this money is at. Community Development Block Grant is developed for the community, for affirmative action, and to develop some other issues that are happening within the low-income sections. You approved a $3 million grant to be written for Eastern Avenue. Yeah, Eastern Avenue needs to be worked on. But so does Albany Street, and so does Crane Street. We need to create jobs. All the jobs that you're creating are transfer jobs. You're saying you created 6,700 jobs in the last 10 years. You haven't done that. Under the five-year consolidated plan, in 2010, you wanted to create 100 new jobs. And every time we come through with the Community Development Block Grants, you've done nothing for any kind of programs for jobs. We had a major program of 13, over $13 million of federal money went into Erie Boulevard. No jobs for the minority and for the disabled. Again, you're just playing with figures, and you're doing it in executive session without the knowledge of the people or even letting us know where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Camille Saszanowski.
Good evening. I'm Camille Saszanowski. I'm president of the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association. And I am here to speak this evening on the fee schedule that's been established, hopefully, for Steyman's Park in addition to the proposed document that goes along with the fee schedule. As you know, the association has worked in partnership with not just the City Council, but also city administration. And on behalf of the association, I'd like to express our appreciation for the improvements to Steyman's Park and also all of your time and investment in the area. And I just want you to know that we fully support the proposed resolution and understand that by having this resolution, the city can modify the fees as needed in the future. And based on these experiences, again, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the association and the Steyman's Park Association and give you our full support. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you do there. Lynda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, City Council Members, and fellow city residents. My name's Lynda Kelleher. I'm a property owner and resident of the city. I'm glad to see that the council is proposing to address and extend the moratorium on convenience stores. As the city departments work with the Planning Commission on new legislation pertaining to convenience stores, there are a few things I would like them to consider, like limiting the hours the stores are open in residential neighborhoods, ensuring enforcement of regulations and follow-up on violation and fines, the litter generated by the clientele, the loitering allowed by the owners of the store, as well as the noise nuisance from these stores. The ownership of a store should not be allowed to be transferred from one family member to another to another to avoid fines and violations. The applications that come before the Planning Commission should have the hours of operations filled in, and these hours of operations that the commission should consider before granting approval. The new legislation should provide some means for the commission to limit the number of stores in a given area. Neighborhoods should not have three convenience stores located in four blocks. I am glad residents will be provided the opportunity to review the new legislation before it is adopted, and that there will be a public hearing for residents to provide their input. We are talking about quality of life issues. While the moratorium does nothing to alleviate the problems of the existing stores, the city has on its books two ordinances that need to be enforced. There are littering and noise ordinances. These ordinances could be used to curtail the activities of these stores. I would like to commend the Planning Commission for allowing neighborhood association leaders and members to speak regarding the moratorium. I spoke at the meeting listing the problems, noise, litter, gambling, selling of Lucy's littering, and remaining open to 1:00, 2:00, and even 3:00 o'clock in the morning of one particular convenience store that plays the Central State Street neighborhood. While the problems have been presented to the city, I received a call from a nearby resident relating to me that the problems had not gotten better, but actually gotten worse. This is unacceptable. We need to let the irresponsible and disrespectful owner of this store know that his store is in a residential neighborhood and that he needs to be a good neighbor. Residents aren't asking for anything unreasonable. They want peace and quiet and a reasonable hour so they can sleep. They don't want to have to pick up trash from this store every day. They don't want their store's customers to arrogantly dump the trash from their vehicles in residences' driveways where the resident's standing right there. Their wants are not unreasonable. Would any one of you want to live with these conditions? Neither do they, and they shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher.
Madam President, City Council, good evening. My name is Joe Kelleher, and I'm a resident here of the city. With respect to the public hearing regarding an extension of the convenience store moratorium, there is no doubt in my mind and those of countless other residents that our city is saturated with such businesses. We are already so overcome that we now have new stores coming in as cellphone stores and selling convenience items just to get a piece of the action. Therefore, it's not only encouraged that the City Council extend the moratorium, it is recommended that the extension continue until an agreement can be reached that satisfies the people of the City of Schenectady. I would further suggest that the following operating hours for future existing convenience stores be as follows. Those that sell gasoline open no earlier than 5:00 a.m. and close no later than 11:30 p.m. Those that do not sell gasoline located in residential neighborhoods or adjacent to a resident on the same street open no earlier than 5:00 a.m. and close no later than 9:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, no later than 11:00 p.m. Friday through Saturday. And those that do not sell gasoline in commercial or mixed-zone use areas not adjacent to a resident open no earlier than 5:00 a.m. and close no later than 11:00 p.m. on any given day. We have codes on the city books. We're only asking for them to be enforced. Stop the backfeeding by the family residents who take over and do business and put the new regulations in place when they come on board. Close the problem businesses. The businesses have a point system, which was talked about by the Planning Committee at their last meeting. Any of these businesses that have these points, simply close them. It's time to start making examples and make these people force their hand to become better neighbors. I'd like to thank the Electric City Bike Rescue for the work that they've done in rehabilitating the new residents that they have in Hamilton Hill and the fine job that they've done. And as far as the Hispanic Heritage Month, I have two sons that have Hispanic heritage from their mother, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm proud of the work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to the approval of the legislative agenda. Mr. Mutavaren moves it. Seconded by Mr. Kozier. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll then move on to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have 17 people signed up to speak. The first is Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Um, here I am. Last meeting I attended was June 23rd. On June 25th, they cut the grass on our neighborhood, you know, took care of our street. Since February, we had holes and everything on the street. Mr. Am came over. On August 28th, they passed two holes that were deep, maybe about four inches deep. Finally, six months later, my point is, I'm glad that we don't have signs in the city of Schenectady saying, "Your tax dollars at work," because I was told that we were going to get our street paved this year again. And I've been coming here since September 2011, seeking some sort of resolution on our street. It never happens. All these tax dollars that these people, my mother pays, my fiance pays, and everyone else on our street, we always overlook. I don't know when's the last time any of you really took a serious ride, but again, I always repeat myself, once you cross Vida and up towards State Street, and come by Vale Cemetery, look at the tall grass that the city's responsible for, it's never cut. And this is from June. I don't know. The other thing I just want to say is that I had the fortunate opportunity, and I said this in June, I had some violations, but I got to give my applause to the code enforcement for really working with me, because they did an outstanding job to make sure that we not just brought it up to code, but gave us pointers on how, and not just turned, say here's to pay the fee and get out, like they did in the past. I just hope that hopefully, I know it's not going to happen this year, but hopefully in the spring, can do something for our street, because I think the next step was seek some legal advice, because I know the city can be held accountable for leaving that street, not just my street, but any other dead-end street or side street that's always overlooked.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I say, we've got one big problem that I know of, and that's Erie Boulevard. These speeders, they speed up and down that street every day. It's got to stop. Got to do something about it. And another thing we've got to do is take care of all the curbs and the roads. Albany Street, bad. Need curbs. Land Terrace, bad. Need curbs. Need, the whole street needs to be fixed, and around the corner needs to be fixed. And we need to put up more safety lights, walk lights, for the elderly people and the handicapped. That's another big thing we need to do. Something's got to be done before somebody gets hurt.
Thank you. Niaja Coleman.
Dear Madam President and members of the City Council, my name's Niaja Coleman. I'm here to talk about a recent experience that occurred at my home September 5th. The Schenectady Police Department, as well as the SWAT team, entered my home around 6:00 a.m. They were searching for two wanted men believed to have been seen at Sixth Harbor Street in the rear apartment. I reside at Sixth Harbor in the front apartment. They had made an arrest in the rear apartment, then proceeded to my home to question me. I woke to an officer banging on my door demanding that I open up, or they would boot my door in. At this point, I opened my door in the front of my home, where an officer asked me who was present, and if I had seen two suspects who believed to be in the area. The officer showed me a picture of two men, and I cooperated, telling them that I did not know who these men were that they were looking for. I also provided them with names of people currently in my home. I was told I was fine, and that if any more information was needed, they would knock back on my door. As I went back inside, an officer stuck his head in my living room window, which was closed facing the rear apartment in which they had intentionally searched. He demanded that I open my door, and that my children's father and I say our names. I had then told him that I spoken with the other officer in the front of my home, and he said I was fine. I asked him to lower his voice, because he was shouting through my house, and my kids were asleep. I then proceeded to open my door, because he demanded that they search my house. The officers entered my home with their guns drawn, which I did not appreciate. I have young kids in the home, a one-year-old son who had a woke scare, and a daughter who's four-years-old with traumatic brain injury and epilepsy condition. Due to her condition, the startling nature of the search could have caused her to go into an epileptic episode and worsen her physical state. There was a lot of commotion of people who entered my home. My home was searched from top to bottom. My mother, who is an elderly person, was visiting overnight and was humiliated while she was in the restroom, and was exposed when she was asked to come out naked. As officers searched, they also stepped on my family's puppy, who sustained an injury in the process. After coming to conclusion that there was nothing hidden in my home, they gave no apology for the inconvenience. I was so upset the way my home was invaded, I did not attend school later that afternoon. Furthermore, I want to mention, the officers that entered my home, they had stopped my neighbor. She was entering her car to question her about the suspects. I feel like I was owed an apology due to the inconvenience of the search. I believe they should have investigated more before causing my family such distress. Luckily, my daughter did not endure an epileptic attack, but the nature of the investigation was unprofessional, embarrassing, potentially life-threatening. And I just want to say that injustice anywhere is a threat of freedom everywhere.
Thank you. Jason Pike.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Protown. Again, about four weeks ago, the mayor had a city council meeting with the mayor there about for property tax assessments. I have, for the last two and a half years to almost three years now, have said that the city council keeps doing favors for the contractors, developers in here by lowering the assessments by between 25% to 50%. If the assessments are off that bad, then the whole, then we need to do a complete citywide assessment. The mayor proceeded to tell us that, well, it's going to cost us $3 million, knowing that that's a 10% property tax increase, and no city council member would vote for it, so therefore they wouldn't move forward. Well, that's totally a scared tactic. It cost us a little over $500,000 the last time, and the in-house assessment was done by in-house. The mayor has also, for the last year, year and a half, has tried to hire non-qualified persons to that position at a much higher rate, and almost caused a sexual discrimination lawsuit on top of that, because of the way the thing happened. Again, the assessments, we have said that all you have to do is divide the city up into five equal places, and you would turn around and do each one of the assessments each year. So at the end of the five years, you've got the complete full assessment done, and then you restart again doing each one of the sections. That's not going to cost us only less than $100,000. The cost is very, very low, and what it's going to do is going to equalize the playing field. You can't have contractors and developers receiving lower tax assessments, receiving pilot programs, receiving Metroplex money, receiving Restore New York grant money, receiving grants after grants after grants. The taxpayers can't keep doling money out while these developers and contractors making 400%, 500% return on their money. That's totally wrong. And we've got to stop the money flow. We've got it to, because people can't continue to pay taxes. I have a cousin that's lived here for over 70 years. They're moving to South Carolina, because they're paying over $9,000 a year in property taxes. You know, I mean, I've got other family members that are doing the same thing. They're moving out. And you guys keep saying, well, let them move out, somebody will move in. The mayor turns around and says, oh, we're qualified home, it's $1,400 taxes and mortgage. Well, that equates a $60,000 income, when the average income for the city is around 38, city employee is around 40,000, and county employee is 43. They can't even qualify for a mortgage. So I mean, you know, hopefully we can look at this tax assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Arias Miranda.
My name is Monica Arias Miranda, and I'm an active voter in my community. I'm from the county. I'm also a community activist, and an animal right activist. I stand here today to respectfully urge this body to shut down the animal control holding facility that it has running at the sewer plant. No living being should be living at a sewer plant. This weekend, we collected over 400 signatures from city and Schenectady voters. Every single person we spoke with was appalled to learn that there is a city shelter at the sewer facility, at the sewer facility. They were, they could not believe that that was happening in their city. Ultimately, what they want, what we're looking for, animal activists and the voters in the city, and the county also. We are seeking for this animal pound to be shut down and a proper shelter used to care for stray animals. Schenectady County obviously in desperate need for a place where animals can be cared for adequately. In a city where poverty rates continue to rise and taxes are skyrocketing, where gangs have a presence, teenagers are committing suicide because of bullying, and high school dropout rates are outrageous, a major, a mayor chooses to nickel-and-dime taxpayers by seeking to raise revenues through an increase in dog licenses coming in, and spending as little as possible to exterminate, exterminate is the right word, the strays found on the street. A mayor who is collecting a state pension, now a salary of $96,000 a year, in a city where the median income is less than $40,000 a year, wants to hold dog owners accountable and punish the stray dogs. The city saved $20,000, from what I understand, this year, by running their own shelter. And they also conducted a dog enumeration. I thought that was kind of interesting. So, dog owners need to be held accountable. Dogs are being counted. That is not the right way to close a budget gap. The situation at the city, at the city's animal holding facility warrants a full investigation and its immediate closure. It has been a month since a rescue organization blew the whistle, but dogs are still in there. Respectfully, this administration voted to allow the city to run this place, and just as easy as they voted to start it, they can end the suffering of these animals. This is not the right way to close a budget gap, and I respectfully urge this body to shut down that facility. It's a disgrace, and it is shameful that city payers have to put up with that kind of nonsense from this administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Jacobs.
I gave everybody a copy, I'm not nearly as eloquent as she is, I just Xeroxed a copy that was suggested to me of New York Agriculture and Market Law, Article 26, Section 356. A person having a pattern of confined animal, I'm just going to get to my point, that refuses to supply, a sufficient supply of good and wholesome air, is guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment for not more than one year, or by a fine of no more than $1,000, or by both. I took with a grain of salt the discussion that I heard last time, and I am again missing my volunteer firefighter training tonight. I will not be back again for a while, because I have to make it up elsewhere. But I went over, because I took with a grain of salt the concept that it couldn't be that bad, or it was bad, and so actually, there was a stray in Iskuna that I was chasing about a week ago. Someone's dog got loose. And then I got on my bike, and I ended up down over there outside the fence, and you can't miss that smell. But I thought, and you hear the dogs crying, and you can follow their voices in, or their howling, and figure out that they're situated in the center of the lot, surrounded by open cesspools. I thought, well, you know, maybe I could live with this smell. And then I got home three hours later, and I got sick. Now, the average dog is 35 pounds, I'm under 110 pounds myself, so I can imagine that if I got sick within three hours, and I'm not making that up, because I went in with a very jaundiced viewpoint on the, you know, the idea that it's a big deal for a dog to have to do with a smell. The average dog is 35 pounds, they're going to succumb much sooner. Also, their sense of smell is much stronger. So my thought, after speaking with a board member of a humane association, was that perhaps I'd either take a dollar per taxpayer out of the tax rolls, or those making double the average income, pay out of their salary. But there is no way that that shelter, concrete building shed situated in the center of the human waste, you know, convergence center, whatever you want to call it, is not in violation of the New York State Agriculture and Market Law, Article 26, Subsection 356. It's not possible. It's too disgusting for words. And again, so if, I will not be here next week. I work, and I hope that it is going to be moved, or I'm going to be speaking to some other people about it, because they may be the least of us, but if we're going to treat small animals like that, what's going to happen next? You know, they can't speak, so I hope it's, it generally goes up the food chain. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Bushnell.
Good evening. I'm Mary Bushnell. I'm a resident of Schenectady County. I would like to open with a quote from Gandhi. "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." He also said, "Be the change that you would see in this world." As a Schenectady County resident, I would like to believe that my voice is heard, and I would like to be the voice for those who can't speak for themselves. I would like to speak for the dogs in the Schenectady Animal Control Facility. I would like to see changes there. The dogs in the Schenectady AC facility are suffering. They need our help. They need to be treated with kindness and integrity. They need a real shelter run by trained personnel. They need veterinary care. I don't know why anyone would choose such an awful toxic location to house living, breathing animals, lost beloved pets of Schenectady residents. More needs to be done to let residents know where their lost pets may be found. I think we can work together for change. I would like to be the change that I wish to see in this world. I would like to see more kindness. You can make the difference. Here in this great city of Schenectady, you can make the difference for these dogs. Please, let's work together. Let's make moral progress. Let's help the Schenectady AC dogs. Thank you for hearing it.
Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Commissioner, City Council. Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association has some new garbage cans on Albany Street, and I wish everybody would go and see how beautiful they are. And I hope the people throw the garbage in the cans. You know, that's why we put them there, because they are beautiful. And one more thing. You know, we elect people to talk for us. We elect people to do things for us in the neighborhood. And I think that we should respect who we elect. We elect these people, and we should respect them, we should know how to speak to them. And, you know, we don't need to stand up and curse them out, and if you have something to say, you call them aside and you speak to them. Thank you. And I want to remind everybody that tomorrow is primary day, and I want to see everybody out there voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda Kelleher.
Good evening. As my husband and I walk along city streets, meeting and talking to residents, some homeowners and some tenants, it became clear to us there are quality of life issues plaguing every neighborhood, with some neighborhoods having more than others, but all having some. The number of vacant houses in the areas of the city, one would think you'd never see a vacant house, have eight vacant houses on it. Listening to residents talk about the youth who wander the streets, creating havoc at all hours of the day and night, listening to residents complain that they have to pick up trash outside their house every day while they watch people throw litter out of their car windows, or just throw it down while walking by, listening to residents who say they are having a hard time keeping their homes because of the high taxes, that there isn't any money left after paying the more taxes and the mortgage to fix their homes, some owners can't even refinance their mortgages because their houses are over assessed and the bank says their homes aren't worth the price that they still own and are assessed at, listening to residents talk about potholes and craters on their streets and how their street hasn't been paved in 10, 15 years, listening to residents talk about the fear they live with every day, how they are afraid to walk out in their neighborhood or sit outside on their porches after dark. It really doesn't take much encouragement before residents open up and talk about there's these issues. They don't come down to City Hall anymore. They think that their concerns won't be listened to, and they've been given up trying to be heard at City Hall. That, to me, is the saddest thing of all. They have given up trying to be heard at City Hall. But not all is lost. Residents still remember a different way of life in the city they grew up in and raised their families. They want that life back. Start with addressing the quality of life issues. Involve the neighbor associations in coming up with solutions to the problems. We don't have all the answers, but we're willing to work with city departments to help find them. A city advisory board should be created to participate in the process. The board should not be filled with appointments from the mayor's office or the council, but should be comprised of residents who care and want to make their city better. Everyone knows money is tight in this city. We have to give up the idea that if we throw enough money at the problem, the problem will go away. Some problems don't. We have to come up with ways for people struggling to pay for their homes to stay in their homes. The city doesn't need any more vacant houses. We have to be cautious what businesses we allow in our neighborhoods. Cell phone stores are popping up across the city, much like convenience stores. The city should consider limiting the number of cell phone stores now, before there are too many of them. I was amazed at the planning commission meeting that a pawn shop was considered an appropriate business for downtown Schenectady. I really found it odd. When you see a pawn shop, does it invoke a positive feeling about the area that it's in? Does it make you feel, or does it make you feel anxious? Personally, I would be fearful of the area. I think it's time to consider a curfew again. I realize the problems of enforcing a curfew, but perhaps with a comprehensive approach, the problems can be aviated. We need to, these hoodlums off the street in just an hour. Our residents need to feel safe sitting outside on their porches or walking in their neighborhoods. Without quality of life being maintained in our neighborhoods, we can't give city-owned houses away.
Please summarize.
We need to get busy addressing these issues now. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher.
Thank you once again. First, I'd like to address our commissioner. I want to commend the, our firefighters, our police, our emergency services. Having been in those jobs myself, I know how difficult they are and some of the conditions that they work in, so please, give them our thanks. At the last city council meeting, you heard from a multitude of advocates for our canine residents of the Schenectady Animal Control Shelter. You heard of deplorable conditions and lack of basic necessities. While some of these needs may not have been met by the respective owners, we must take each situation into consideration as we would in any court. A dog under the same conditions would be a family member under others. Like our children, our pets become a product of their environment. Inmates get visitation and regular exercise. These animals should not be any different. Some of the animals, if not properly claimed and if properly trained, would make perfect pet, companion, service or therapy animal. How helpful would it be to allow these animals behind bars to be cared for by our county or city residents who are behind bars? Perhaps there is an opportunity for mutual rehabilitation. This is a quality of life issue for our animals. But what about for our people? Residents who have lived in Schenectady for decades are being rewarded for their longevity with increasingly higher taxes, tacked-on fees, and diminishing infrastructure in the form of pothole slaloms and water main breaks. People are leaving the city because they can't afford to live in their homes with property values decreasing to the point where they are unable to refinance. The city, like any other business or family, must live within its means and stop using the residents as a cash machine. Our city is built for 120,000 people, now only holds 67,000. Eighty percent are on some type of public assistance, leaving the remaining 20 percent to carry the burden. If you do the math, you'll realize it's unsustainable. Listen to the people and their pleas to improve the quality of life in Schenectady. The people are speaking on social media, on the Facebook page, "A Better Quality of Life for Schenectady." We have codes that are on the books already. They simply need to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Carrada.
Okay, what I want to talk about is mainly with the dog issue. From what I've been hearing from my supporters for the Justice for Dogs here in Schenectady is that the kennel, very poor conditions. I know, I wouldn't want to live in those poor conditions. I know you, city council members, wouldn't want to live in those poor living conditions. I mean, come on, somebody's gotta wake up here and do something, because the thing is, from what I understand, when people mistreat animals, that's how serial killers start. That's how Ten Bunny started, that's how most of the famous serial killers got started, by mistreating the dogs. Then they went on to killing humans. Now, the thing is that with the dog issue, I mean, come on, it's just common sense. No dog, animal or human would want to live in that condition. Like, my supporters here said, "We want that closed, we want it closed." Now, the thing about the quality of life issue Mr. Riggi has discussed and wanted support, I've been walking around the city, different parts of the city. When you get up towards Ellis Hospital, you hardly see any trash on the ground, you see lawns kept, you see houses kept, you see people respect to other people. You go to all the parts of cities like that. Come down here to the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood, forget it, even that Vale Park, forget it. You see trash is galore, buildings, abandoned buildings boarded up, guns for drug dealers. I mean, come on, all this stuff is just common sense. See, me and a few other residents, as Paige had told you about last time, scary side of Schenectady Facebook, we are mad as hell and we ain't gonna take it no more. How many times have we been here speaking up on issues, not just with the Justice for Dogs, quality of life issues here in Schenectady, the crime issues in Schenectady, which is just about a Troy and Albany? I mean, come on, we residents are mad as hell and we ain't gonna take it no more. I'm glad personally Mr. Riggi is here supporting certain things that us residents are fed up with. He's the only one on the city council, and I've said this more than once, the only one in the city council doing the job. Everyone of you, all you're here for is to vote for your next term or the almighty dollar. You need to start listening to Mr. Riggi, you need to start supporting him, because we residents are mad as hell and we ain't gonna take it no more.
Thank you. Carol Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Carol Johnson, I'm a resident of Albany. I started coming here naively believing that if you knew what was going on in the city holding facility, that you would stop. But after being publicly chastised the last time we were here, and then hearing the lovely things said about us and our concerns and what we know to be the truth on the news tonight, I'm losing my faith in government and democracy. I must also add, though, one of the fascinating things about city council is the huge range of things that come up, and I actually have heard some very inspiring things, and people coming up here and telling some truly distressing stories that I hope that you will adhere tonight, so I'm hoping that today ends on a better note than it has begun. Even though I am losing my faith, I'm here because, like everybody else, if we don't, I'm sorry, I'm here like everybody else, because if we don't come and talk about the atrocities, we can't expect anyone else to come and step up. Clearly, the conditions at the city of the Schenectady Animal Holding Facility won't get better without more public attention and outrage. If the city were motivated to do something, it would have done something when, after these horrors were brought to the attention of the police chief, or the mayor, or the city council weeks, no months ago. It's taken months and months to even get the dogs posted publicly online so that owners might be able to find them and reclaim them. We are not going away anytime soon. More and more people, locally and globally, know what the city's been doing, keeping dogs in conditions of confinement that seem illegal on their face and killing them with little to no effort to locate their owners despite what the law requires. Based on the stories that have been told outside this forum and by prior speakers over the last several weeks, one has to wonder if the city's been keeping any records at all, as required by law, about the dogs that have been taken in and subsequently killed in a particularly heinous manner. We've heard stories of people who were told there was no record of the dog that they knew the city had actually picked up and even had the officer's name. There's people who have talked about trying to claim their dogs, only to be turned away repeatedly because they didn't have the right paperwork, or they had to speak to one person, even as the hours ticked away before their dog was going to be killed. The city can choose to do nothing to improve the dog's conditions of confinement, regardless of the moral and ethical arguments, regardless of the publicity and the public outrage. I'm sure the city has nothing to worry about, because after all, the animal control officers are so well-trained, there's all sorts of documentation available about what dogs have been seized and subsequently killed for profit, and of course, the efforts that no doubt are being taken to reunite them with their owners as required by law. But I suspect it's only a matter of time before the real horrible stories start to come out. People who may have spent weeks or months trying to find their dogs, never to find them, when perhaps they were killed by the city, maybe not even given the number of days that the law requires. I keep thinking about that sad, scared dog, that little yellow lab mix with the pink collar and leash still on that was killed days before her legal hold was up, because the rescue, even though the rescue was willing to take her, the animal control officers didn't want to deal with her. I really hope that the city starts to take this more seriously and does something soon. And my closing statement, before I have to say it, is, I'm looking forward to the day that this rescue is recognized for all of the efforts that this community is making, just like the bike rescue was. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Hudson.
Good evening. I actually was not gonna speak tonight in anticipation of the police department's presentation next week. I also sent an email to Chief Falvo apologizing for calling him a liar publicly out of respect for him and his family. Now, by listening to Lieutenant McCracken call us liars on national TV tonight about dogs not being walked, and also a fellow animal advocate who's been down to the facility taking dogs, told me that Cindy from Animal Control has now stated that it is my fault that dogs are dying and only getting fed once a day. This makes me have to come and continue to speak. I was hopeful that we were coming to a resolution, but I see now that we are back to square one. Now you are again deflecting, instead of owning up to the wrongs you have allowed and fixing them. So I ask all of you now, what are you doing to help the dogs in this facility live? And I also need to say, rest in peace Victor and Tyson. McCracken laughs on camera tonight, and you should all feel very proud. This is not a laughing matter. Animals are suffering, this is not funny. The police department's lack of compassion is not funny. Just remember, when the very people you are protecting are put under oath, the truth will be told. McCracken says tonight on the news, "We didn't put the animals in this situation." When asked, "When the animals come in hurt, who, when the animals come in hurt, who takes on the responsibility to treat them?" I am gonna be sending copies of our invoices, vet records and copies of the photos to News Channel 6 as soon as I get home, so that our side of the story is gonna be heard. Cindy did tell us also that she is only allowed to spend $200 per incident after a sergeant approves the care. In closing, I am looking forward to the documents requested in the FOIL request for our review. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Harvey.
Good evening, kind gentlemen and gentlewomen. I'm Bob Harvey. I live on Plymouth Avenue in Schenectady, and I'm speaking for Schenectady United Neighborhoods, a coalition of ten neighborhood associations, and some of the members are up here with me. This speech is about the quality of life issues in our city. I assure you that we come here tonight not to criticize, but instead to assist and support the city council and the mayor, offering some new ideas and to re-energize some previous ones. Recently, Councilman Riggi has proposed that the city become more assertive about reducing the incidence of some quality of life problems. Our neighborhood associations have often discussed and spoken about, about many of those problems in the past, so let me review the situation. In any city, a good quality of life is whatever it takes to make the city livable and attractive, worth moving into, worth starting a new business, worth raising a family, even worth paying reasonable taxes. Let's use the broken windows concept and its effect on quality of life. A seemingly small apartment like two broken windows and a vacant home, if not addressed promptly and firmly, tends to grow into more blight on that block and so on. Graffiti is another broken window. Painting over graffiti is good, but we need prevention. Could residents near typical graffiti sites be recruited to be watchers who quickly call the police? Good idea. Excessive litter is a broken window. Certainly, code enforcers could cite any stores that fail to regularly police their sidewalks. Also, we hear that a number of dirty city garbage cans are being distributed to neighborhoods requesting such. Very good. Next, we're aware that the city has limited staff and tight finances, so we have to come up with new and creative ideas of doing things. Let's think out of the box. After all, Schenectady is famous for overcoming adversity and for its inventiveness. Let's tap into the best resource of all, our people. For instance, how about starting a citizens consulting panel? When new initiatives for improving the quality of life are started, a resident panelist is assigned to consult cooperatively with city staff on the progress and continued follow-up on the initiative. Talk about transparency. Let's see, my time is almost up. I'll talk about certain property owners demonstrating little concern for their impact on neighbors, the "I don't care" attitude, stores that are open too late. Let's talk about residents and businesses must buy into being active participants. And so, in working together with the city, I conclude that let's work together to make our environment, our livable city, even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Commissioner Bennett, President King and council members. I am Pat Smith, I'm a Mount Pleasant resident, and I am president of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. MPNA has done much work to clean up the area of Norwood Avenue between the 890 Michigan Avenue exit ramp, the Little League fence and field, and the fence lineup of the school property on Norwood Avenue. We replanted the island on Norwood and Skyler, added perennials to the hill across from the tennis court in the Little League field. We regularly clean up litter in that area. The city does allow sports to use the field, and that is fine, especially for the children, since it does build character. Unfortunately, the teams do not follow the rules of parking and the one of litter. The Friday night before Labor Day, the Pop Warner children were practicing. A mother in a van with children and a male adult parked on Norwood Avenue near Skyler Street. The woman took a chunk of bread from the van floor and flung it like a frisbee across the street and landed in my yard. When politely asked to pick it up, I received a heavy attitude and nasty remarks. I called the gentleman who's in charge of Pop Warner and I got nowhere. I watched parent after parent throw bottles and trash on the ground inside the field. This is ongoing. Since the gate is bent from a car accident several years ago, the papers blow out into the street, the neighbors' yards, the island and the tennis courts. MPNA is doing our part to keep some of Mount Pleasant litter and trash free. The tennis courts and the baseball fields are the first views of Mount Pleasant to be seen when coming from Brandywine Avenue or 890. Many people come from all over to tournaments at the courts, and what are they thinking with all the trash? During practice, the cars block Norwood Avenue and now park on the lawn where re-treet planted trees and replanted perennials, and is becoming unsightly. This is not a parking lot. We understand the city has staff and financial issues which prevent the cleaning up of areas. Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association is trying to do our part, but if the city allows the athletic groups' use of the fields with no repercussions for not cleaning up and respecting the neighborhood, that they are the neighborhood that they are guests in, what are we to do? This is a quality of life issue, and these are owner-occupied, single-family homes who are trying to keep the neighborhood clean. MPNA can only do so much, and we are hoping our actions will inspire the residents of the area to follow our lead, but it is discouraging when guests don't pick up after themselves. We need the city to help enforce the litter and parking laws and work with all those involved to rectify this issue, please. Ms. Motiverian has photos that were taken during and immediately after they left the field. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angie Lupo. Angie Lupo? Okay. Frank Wicks.
First, I want to thank committee member Porterfield for recognizing the bicycle rescue we've been doing at the Edison Tech Center, and I'm a member of the board, the vice president there, so I was happy to have it down there. But anyone that's not been there either to fix a bicycle or see the real treasures we have down there ought to come down and visit. Other topics are dogs. The temperament of a dog is a product of the nature and nurture. You get two dogs that are a violent breed to start with, and then you name them Tyson and Vic, the names of convicted felons, and you don't, you let them get loose, and, you know, they do damage. The shelter, the responsible, decent dog owner would have those two dogs euthanized the same day. Would never be a City Council. The city would never have touched the thing. So I'd say that what the, you know, what the city has to do is come up with, you know, better laws. Basically, any violent dog, you know, if the owner doesn't euthanize it immediately, no, the city does. So there's been probably too much pandering. There's three kinds of dogs there, you know, the violent ones with owners that basically, you know, nurture them into violence. There's the occasional stray, you know, stray dog with a license with a collar. That ought to be held until someone has a chance to get it. But the other dogs really shouldn't be, you know, they shouldn't be held there for long. The other topic is the police. We just heard a horror story about the police breaking into someone's home and violating the home and property. And the suggestion I made last time, the problem in Ferguson, Missouri, was that the, one of the problems is police are too anonymous. And the way to make police less anonymous is, we can't read their badges. So you watch a football game, football players have numbers, the referees have numbers. Policemen ought to have numbers. If you see a policeman acting well, you ought to be able to, you know, put into a web message board that this policeman acted well. If you see someone misconduct, you ought to be able to do the same thing. I mentioned this to Safety Commissioner Bennett. His response was, "No one else is doing it. It doesn't matter that no one else is doing it. Schenectady could do it. Schenectady could set a standard for the rest of the country. Once we see it benefits Schenectady, it would be the norm other places." And finally, my own experience as a cop, a high-overpaid, you know, sergeant, Patrick Morris, he fabricates a ticket, he lies in court, and then when confronted, he can't talk about it afterwards.
Please summarize.
So there ought to be some way to directly deal with this kind of thing.
Okay, please, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, John Fink.
Thank you for letting me talk, and I apologize for coming in late.
Bring the mic down.
Sorry. J Street, one-way street running south to north, which is where I live. Ten times in the last seven months, I've seen cars coming the wrong way on that street. Bradley Alley, which runs into J Street, is not a one-way street. Three times, I've seen cars coming out of Bradley Alley, making the right-hand turn, going against traffic. It is requested by this person that a one-way or a no-right-turn sign be put in front of Bradley Alley on the other side of J Street, so that this does not continue to occur. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Motiverian.
Just a few announcements. The City of Schenectady Police Officer Exam, the application deadline is September 29, 2014, and the examination date is November 15, 2014. There will be an informational session on September 11, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. at the Schenectady County Public Library, 99 Clinton Street, Schenectady. I encourage people who would like to take the exam to please attend this informational session, September 11 at 6:00 p.m. at the main public library. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that came down this evening to talk about their concerns. As Ms. Isaacs has said, that there are garbage cans now on Albany Street, and our goal is to, that people will not litter and will use the garbage cans which have been placed there. So the Neighborhood Association has worked really hard to make that happen, and we continue to work with the city so that it helps to improve the quality of life on that corridor and throughout. And with sun coming down and talking about the things, the quality of life issues, I think that is important, and I appreciate the fact that they've come with some solutions with it as well, in terms of getting the community involved, because of course, as the city, we can't do this just all on our own. It's a very large city. I also want to announce that there's a program that's starting called Reading is Fun, where every child is everyone else's child, and the effort is to teach every four-year-old in Schenectady how to read. So there are going to be five meetings, starting on September 15. And the first one is going to be at the Steymonds Family Investment Center on September 15, starting at 6:00 p.m. The next one will be on September 18, Craig Street Boys and Girls Club. These all start at 6:00. The next meeting will be September 22 at 6:00 p.m. at Faith Tabernacle, which is on Old Standard Street in Mount Pleasant. On September 29, there will be one at the Yates Boys and Girls Club at 6:00 p.m. And finally, on October 30, excuse me, on October 1, at 6:00 p.m., there'll be one at the Church of God, 920 State Street. Anyone that wants more information about this can call 377-9542. Again, in the Reading is Fun program, to teach four-year-olds, only four-year-olds, to read. So information, they can come to any of those sessions. And again, the program is free. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kojer.
Well, eliminated two of my community announcements, so this is good. I appreciate that very much. And again, that Reading is Fun is a great program. Professor Majid is a good community leader here in Schenectady City, and the Youth Bureau has worked very closely with him, along with the Boys and Girls Clubs, and there's just many partners and community agencies working with that, including the Schenectady School District. And again, it's just a great cause, and perhaps we can get that information up on our city website. I can get that, or Ms. Porterfield can get that to one of our clerks and get that up there on our site. I think it'd be great information. The other piece I just want to talk about is, again, Council President King had mentioned that next Monday, we will have a presentation from Commissioner Bennett regarding the dog situation. I certainly urge all of our folks that are still remaining here to attend that. We are actually having, again, the meeting will be upstairs here at 5:30 to accommodate what we expect to be an overflow crowd, but again, to hear from the commissioner himself on what we're doing and how we can work to resolve this and hopefully partner in the near future. Regarding the Mount Pleasant and Pop Warner football, I just talked with Mr. Motiverian as well. We're going to give a call to Jeremy Howard and see if we can get some garbage cans up there. I think that's one of our problems, is there's really just no, there's no trash receptacles up there for the folks to recycle the bottles or even to throw out the trash. So consequently, that's where it's going to end up. And we all know George Rose, Mr. Rose, who again is just a tremendous individual here, and I'm sure we can put a phone call in him tomorrow, and Carmen DiPaolo as well, and see if we can work that out for them. And the biggest thing, of course, is filling them up, but we got to be able to pick it up afterwards, too. So we'll see if we can partner on that. The last piece is, the Schenectady County has their Paddle, Paddle &amp; Run event coming up this Saturday. It's a great opportunity for families and individuals and businesses to get involved. It is going to be held in Scotia at Collins Park. And the program is online at schenectycounty.com, and just click on the link there. You'll see all kinds of information. You have to be at least 12 years of age in order to participate, and you're going to have teams up to four, and you're going to have individuals as well. So it's a paddled, let me just see here, paddling is about a seven and a half miles of a bicycle tour. The paddling is a 1.6 miles with a kayak, and then running is, of course, a 5K. Now, so for those of you who are not in shape, as myself, and cannot participate in this, we'd love to look for volunteers, and volunteers is always the big word that we're looking for. And again, it's a great opportunity for students as well. So there's a link, again, on the county website to click on that, and we're looking for at least another 50 volunteers to join us. I've been told we start at 7:30, and we'll be done by 10:30 that morning. So it's a great way, again, for those high school individuals who need the community service hours to participate. And again, it's the schenectycounty.com website, and click on the Paddle, Paddle Run. Thank you. And one more thing. Happy birthday to Council Presidents. Can we all sing "Happy Birthday" to President? Can we do that? Can we do that? You know, I'm going to give the phone, and even though he's my, a good friend of ours, Mr. Callahan, come here, my friend. Come on, come on, come on, come on. We're going to see if he really has a voice, all right? He says he can karaoke, and you know, I missed him at J Street or the Italian Festival. There's some rumors out there about your rendition that you had. I heard that, so let me give it to him, and we're going to have him lead "Happy Birthday" to Council President King.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate that. Yes, it was a lot of fun singing over there on J Street at the Italian Fest. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Madam President. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
You're not going that way, are you? Thank you, and Joe, thank you very much. All right, go ahead.
Thanks, Joe. Commissioner Bennett.
Good, Madam President. Shortly before I got here tonight, I just returned from Albany, where the mayor, Dave Buco, people from Rush Gaming, and others made their presentation to the Economic Development Gaming Commission Authority. They were one of four presentations. Ours was the last. I think it was very well-received. They did a very professional job, responded accurately to the questions that were raised. There will be public meetings by that same commission, where members of the public will also be afforded the opportunity to speak in favor or against any or all of those proposed facilities. So that step has been taken. I spoke with Ms. Coleman prior to the commencement of the meeting regarding the situation that occurred at her home last Friday. We have made arrangements for the Internal Affairs Unit to contact her tomorrow afternoon and meet with her to open those discussions and find out what went on and try and identify who might be responsible for some of the things that are alleged to have occurred or did occur, but that has been commenced. You remember Ms. Edwards, the last, maybe two meetings ago, had an issue with a plumber. I have been on the phone with Ms. Edwards a number of occasions, including this morning. We were down to one last item, and that is, we have to take the concrete slurry off the water turnoff for obvious reasons, because you can't see where it is. But she is very satisfied with the progress that was made. I thank Paul Lafon from the Water Treatment Facility, because I pass on what I want to see to him. He's the contact with the plumber, as recent as today, but I think, maybe even this afternoon, it got resolved. The trash across the street from her home was removed by the SNAP crew, and they did it one heck of a job. They had, they knocked that off within about three hours. She's a lovely lady, and I hope we have been able to perhaps change maybe some of the thoughts she had about the way the city does service and their failure to be responsive. Regarding the barber complaint, I also talked to Dave. Again, I've talked to him several times before. We did what we were able to do within the confines of the law. He knows enough to call me if he has any issues, and I certainly would encourage him to continue to do so if things don't get resolved there. Regarding the air quality issue around the dog shelter, I guess I'm a little bit confused. We've been inspected numerous occasions by the people from Ag &amp; Markets, and that includes a spontaneous inspection last Friday. Not once has any inspector from Ag &amp; Markets cited to us that the air quality over in that area where the shelter is located violates the Ag &amp; Markets law. So at this point, I think what I'm going to do is ask them to have their legal counsel solve it one way or the other. Is violating the law or is it not? But I find it strange to believe if that was clear-cut, why is it that we passed all the inspections? I mean, certainly, they had the ability to notice that. We'll discuss this and many other things on next Monday. The convenience stores, I'm on the committee that's trying to struggle with how to rewrite, you know, you think it might have been a simple job when you started weeks ago. It isn't. And one of the biggest problems, I ask this question, why are there no business hours put on the certificate of use? And it predates my arrival here seven years ago, but apparently, it's never been done unless it's a licensed establishment that sells alcoholic beverages, and then it's put on through the county liquor authority rules. The problem now is, there's a constitutional issue if you try to retroactively put hours on these stores. But I don't see a constitutional issue if you change the rules from this day forward. And it's quite a struggle. My colleague in corp counsel, I'm sure, is well-aware of the challenges we've been dealing with. Things like the trash, that's already in certificate of use, so it's up to codes to cite them when they don't clean up around their premise. That's a requirement of keeping your certificate of use. And I have provided copies of the three pages of certificate of use to all the ones that we have been paying visits to, and we will be visiting again. And when I ask them to read it, if you have any questions, we'll settle the confusion, but this is what's required of you. I'm glad the moratorium got extended, if for no other reason, we want to have a decent product in the changes of the law. And it takes time to do this, and it takes research to do it, but we will do our darndest to try and get something that's more functional, that will address the needs that the public has brought up. It's frustrating to us. Nothing would be finer than to walk in there with a piece of paper and say, "You're closed." There's requirements right now that say, "If you sell the place to your brother, you're required to tell us about it." Ho, ho. And unless we demand to get copies of the financial certificates, that's if they change those, there's no way you can even enforce that. So it's just a very complicated situation, but we will try our hardest to meet and come up with the answers of the questions that we've been getting from you people out there in the public. We want it, because it helps us. Makes our job easier, makes Code's job much easier. And for Mr. Fink, I will talk to John Coluccio tomorrow regarding the traffic signs. They're pretty simple to get put together, because he makes them. And, you know, if there's a problem there, we'll put some signs up. And again, we're going in the right direction with the dog situation, and I'll repeat what I said here last week. One lady said it here very nicely tonight. She wants to be part of the solution, and that's what it's going to take. You know, the finger pointing, and it serves no purpose but to make people angry, and it's self-defeating. So those of you who wish to hear us next Monday night, we'll explain- So those of you who wish to hear us next Monday night, we'll explain to you what we have done, what was already being done, despite the accusations that it wasn't, and hopefully we can get on the same page and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also feel the need to kind of comment on the conditions at the water treatment plant. I've been over there numerous times over the years. It's clean, it's not tidy, I have not smelled odors, and we have city staff working there every day. So when people start describing it as this horrible place, it isn't. Also, as I asked to make an announcement, Bellevue Preservation Inc.'s monthly meeting will be held Thursday, September 11 at 7:00 p.m. at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 1911 Fairview Avenue. Their speaker will be Trudy Menard from the Alley Cat Feral Friend Network. She will speak about feral cats. And the Bellevue Farmers Market, held at Marinatha Ministries Parking Lot, corner of Broadway and Thompson Street, will continue every Thursday from 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. beginning September 11 to September 25. Tickets will be available for the October 11 Buc-Ee's Barbecue Chicken Dinner. That's from Julia Lewis. And also, I want to extend congratulations to Gershans. They are celebrating their 60th anniversary this year. I believe are having a ceremony this week on Thursday, I think, and so that's wonderful for them. So if there's nothing else to come before the council, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Mutiverian, seconded by Mr. Yeah, right, Kozier. All in favor. It's my birthday, right.